Kevin, you want to say who's taping the meeting?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Man, it's been a while. We're taping the meeting. Is anybody else taping the meeting? Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thanks.
I skipped number two, sorry.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to see you again. It's nice to be here when it's actually warmer outside, so if you please forgive me, I've been battling allergies for the past couple of days, so my throat may be a little...
Not at all.
Yeah.
You've got plenty of minutes, if you want.
Okay. So, it's obviously a very, very busy time throughout the high school. We are having all of our senior events starting to come after months of planning, and it's really gone by fast. We obviously just had our banquet in the beginning of April, and we're looking ahead to prom, which will be the 29th from 6:00 to 10:00. It will be at Chez Joseph. Always do a great job, great food, so we're really, really excited for that. And then, for the next couple of weeks, you have various events that the students and the teachers are planning. We have this Friday, there will be a town hall where students can ask local and state officials their opinions and information on various issues pertaining to school safety. And in addition, on Friday, you will have a play that is running, Orphelia. Forgive me if I don't have the full name, but it should be good. The Drama Club is putting it on. It'll be later on tonight, or later on Friday night at the auditorium, so that's definitely going to be great. And then, fast forward a couple more weeks, we have our graduation, which will be on June 1st, and the rain date for that will be Sunday, so that June 1st is a Friday. The rain date will be the Sunday following it. And if it rains there on Sunday, then they move it inside the auditorium. So, it's going to go by fast. We're all looking forward to it, but it's going to be weird walking through those doors for the last time together, so we're trying to, we're looking forward to it. But, so yeah, that's definitely the big couple of events that are coming up. It's, we also have a couple of different civics-minded organizations in the school that are putting together a kind of a town hall-style forum later on after the town hall that we're having with the local officials. And it's going to be a place where students can debate between privacy and security. It's actually pretty cool. It's coming to fruition more and more. We don't have a definitive date on it, but it should be in the next two weeks. And we have clubs like the Debate Club, clubs like Model Congress, the Political Science Club, and then AP Gov all participating in it to try and help the sides come up with their arguments and develop good convincing arguments. And I think that besides that, we're just waiting for the 18th.
Waiting for each of you to be done.
Yeah. The 18th is our last normal, regular day of school. We have finals the week after that, but it's very sporadic. You can go in for your finals each day, so sometimes you may only be going in for an hour and a half each day. So, last full day is the 18th.
Terrible.
I know. Awful. So sad.
Structure, not spread.
Structure.
And then, I want to believe that everyone else's last day of school is June 19th, so we're getting out decently ahead of everyone, and we're making sure they all know about it, too. Thank you all for having me here. Hope my allergies isn't sounding too bad with my throat and all that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Where is college taking you?
I am going to Georgetown.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Where's your banquet held?
The banquet, or the banquet at the prom.
Not the prom. You said the prom was Chez Joseph, correct?
Yes, and that's coming.
Is banquet in the same facility?
Banquet was at Delaney House, and that was...
That's what I was curious.
Yeah, and that was earlier this month.
Don't get up so quick, questions.
Anybody else got questions before he runs away?
Nope.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It was Reviving Orphelia.
Reviving Orphelia, okay.
Is the exact name of the play.
Perfect. Thanks, Joe. Counsel comments?
Real quick, I got an email from a former resident who was a former also school committee member, Bruce Stebbins, and he has been advocating to have the Pine Knoll Swimming Pool named after former owner and swimming Hall of Fame member Charles Sylvia. And he's running, he's been asking for a while to determine what the procedure is. So I think one of the things we, Steve, we get direction, is whether it's done through the school committee or done through the rec department, and what the policy is to name a municipal built or asset, and have that process go back to the council for a vote. So I'm just bringing it out there. I know he's been patient in asking. I just got the email today. I just figured I would share that as counsel comments.
We'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, but it's...
I know we brought it up once before, but it's been a while since we talked about it originally. And one other thing is on Wednesday, Wednesday the 16th, the Lions are honoring 2018 Distinguished Session of the Year on the 16th, and I believe it's at 6 o'clock. This year's recipient is Edward Zemba. It's at Mario's, and it starts at 6 o'clock. So, I know there was an email out for us, 10, but just for everybody to know, that's out there coming up next Wednesday. Tom, any report? We don't have any.
This is it.
No report. I'm late, I tell ya.
You're not late. You were here on time. I sent you back. Because I forgot.
So you let everyone know.
So it's me. Or you don't take a wait when you don't have to. So the budget is a report, so move on to six. Approval minutes. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the April 24th, 2018 open session minutes as submitted.
I had one correction, which I spoke to Jeannie about regarding April 24th. It was in the second page, the fourth paragraph. There was a two-part to answering questions regarding the budget. There was 5% up or down, and anything over 10,000 up or down. And Jeannie, I was kind enough to make that change just a little while ago, but for your information.
Who has amended that?
Correct.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
April 24th, 2018 executive session minutes. Is there any issues with, anybody seen it? Nope. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 24th, 2018 executive session minutes as submitted.
So move. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And how about the open session meetings from May 2nd? Do we have any questions there? Changes? No. I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from May 2nd, 2018 as submitted.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Communications, correspondence, and announcements. Subcommittee's. Don, you're up.
Nothing, nothing.
Don, you're up.
Nothing again.
Kathy?
Something.
Kathy got something.
Yeah, thank you. The Town Manager Evaluation Subcommittee, which is comprised of my colleagues, Mr. Federici and Mr. Ford, and I met last Wednesday to review the individual evaluations relative to our town manager's annual performance review. And we, the review document that we settled upon was recommended from a municipal website for the evaluation of municipal heads. So, we, Mr. President here...
Oh, yeah.
Modified it to fit the needs of the town of East Long Meadow, and so each counselor had the opportunity to fill out the review. The committee looked at all of the responses. It was broken down into category traits where we were asked to rate, give a number from 1 to 5, 5 meaning consistently exceeds the performance standard to 1, which was rarely meets the performance standard. And in order to reflect the feelings of the council, we took an aggregated average of each of our responses for those category traits. The second part of the review was a written narrative, and it posed four specific questions relative to, at the manager's strengths. They didn't use the word weakness, but areas to improve performance. The third one was recommendations, and the fourth was goals and expectations. Goals and expectations. And there, we took a consensus of the spirit of each of the seven responses, making sure that we reflected, we didn't leave anybody's points out, that they were melded into a paragraph that was more of a consensus. And that said, the results were put into a report that Mr. Manley will review in open session later this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
2018 Memorial Day, that is at the high school.
Yes.
Yes.
And I forget the time it starts, but I have the 10:30.
Did I forward that?
Yeah, you did. I've got it right here.
How about... She had no email.
Start performing at 10:30, and the step off is at 10:50.
All right. So that's just for Ross, right? A few hours ago.
Right.
I know I spoke on that particular matter with Mike Lubo, who's the coordinator, so he has the, there it is, you got the itinerary. So, we have a couple of different roles of playing that. And it's always nice to be there.
Yeah, we get a great turnout in the town, so it sounds peaceful.
So what is the day? License matters. 8A, 1. Change of hours for license premises for Pride Store 13 North Main Street. This is actually, was a request that was in front of planning, and planning is making the recommendation that the hours do not change at that Pride Store at the center. So it was originally, the request was to go, I believe, till 11:00 PM, which...
Was it 5:00 AM to 11:00?
Yeah.
There is a representative from Pride here, for whatever purpose.
I think you just wanted to, I know that they were, the planning board did not recommend that change.
Right.
So, for us, it's a matter of whether we decide, this is actually for a liquor license piece, too, to change, so we really don't change it because they haven't recommended the change from planning. So at this point, I think we just have to accept the reaffirm the recommendation of the planning board to deny the change of hours for license premises for Pride Store 13 North Main Street. So I will entertain a motion to reaffirm that recommendation of the planning board to deny the change of hours for the premises of Pride 13 North Main Street.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
The only comment, we have somebody from Pride, is that he, would it be, doesn't matter?
It's really not relevant, because the planning board didn't forward it to us for reaction, other than to reaffirm their vote. Any else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Old biz, we don't have any. New business, discussion of changes to general bylaws. You want to talk about that, Tom?
Sure.
I will say this. We have, we just had a discussion about the change in the general bylaws, and Ralph Page was in this morning, and there is some concern with the volume of changes that we have to the bylaws, and I know my thought on this is to, we have some recommended changes, with some of the changes, significant amount of changes to those bylaws are just cleanup language, or cosmetic, whatever you want to call it, just the, there are some substantive changes, and then there's a new chapter to be added on revolving funds. So, that is going to be a task that is sort of cumbersome, so I was thinking that we put a subcommittee together to tackle the changes come back. One of the recommendations, I think, that we talked about today and over the last couple of weeks, was the codification software to try and get it all together and adopt in one book, for lack of a better term.
But it has to be...
But it has to be fixed first. Right, it has to be worded first.
So, one of the things that I recommended, I think you and I spoke, and I don't know that I had a chance to share it with Tom, because I've been pulled up in meetings for budget for so long, but there are a few that are necessary before the close of this year or will have some issues with the state. So those are something that can be pinpointed and concentrated on. Those that are just cleanup certainly are easy enough for Tom and I to maybe point those out in what sections and just tackle those. We did talk about this.
I know we talked about it.
Yeah. I'm forgetting who I talked to. All I'm doing is talking, it seems like. So I think we can take some of it in pieces. Those that are substantive, that are not under a time constraint of the end of this fiscal year, probably can be carried over a little bit longer, because it is, there's a lot of changes. A lot of needed changes, though.
Right. It's just amount of changes.
Right.
So I know we had thought about a public hearing for the 22nd. Was it, Tom, was it the 22nd?
Yeah, 22nd.
So we may have to actually postpone that public hearing until we actually get it together, and I think better for us to get it right once than do one chapter, then do another chapter, do another chapter, keep posting. So I think a subcommittee might be able to help. If you guys want it. Denise, I don't know if you think you can do it with Tom, or...
Yeah, I think, I think we can do a lot of the pieces, and then there are some that will be a priority as to the council wanting to tackle certain sections first or second.
So once we get there, we can do the sub.
Yeah, so why don't Tom and I work on, we can work on recommendations to you all for how to tackle which pieces.
Okay. That's easy enough for me.
Is it time-sensitive per the charter? Tom, did you know that?
No.
It's, I think they recommended that changes be made within a year.
A year.
If I remember right, but...
I know part of that was the meeting where we went, well, actually, we had to establish that, the only real timeframe piece was to establish the subcommittee.
Committee, the initial subcommittee.
The initial subcommittee that did the review to get the document together was the only actual timeframe requirement. Now that that's done, we have a little bit of leeway on actually implementing their changes, so I think we can...
Yeah, a lot of those changes from the previous subcommittee were basically language changes from board of selection to town council.
More formatting than...
Yeah, so this will be more cumbersome, for sure.
And those were made, and they're on the website now.
Yeah. And you kind of needed to do that first step before we tackled this next step. Otherwise, it starts to get all mushy.
Which is the content experts, which are the department heads.
Right, the department heads that are day-to-day dealing with it, yeah.
All right, that was financial matters.
Financial matters have been my life, recently. So...
Is that on Netflix?
It's a five-part series.
No, it would be a boring, boring story.
Docu-drama?
So, although I can put a budget together mentally, I can't copy it because it's stapled upside down. And so, I apologize for that. It looks a little odd, but...
It's here.
It's here, and it's together.
They blamed it on the machine.
No, it was the operator. It was the operator. So, I'd ask the Director of Finance to come on board as well. Do you have the latest draft? Did you, you grabbed one? And you want to let the council know what you have there?
I have the 2017 issued financial statements, so I printed out a copy for everyone. It is on our website as well, as well as the single audit, but I didn't print that one because it's not really impacting our budget right now.
So, as a background to where we started this current year, so if there's any hesitation as to... So that's for some late-night reading, when you can't fall asleep.
Just a little light reading.
What's included in that file?
That is the audited financial statements that were issued by our auditors, Scanlon and Associates, for June 30, 2017, which is our most recent audit period.
When does the next audit start?
Well, our fiscal year ends on June 30th, then we generally prepare for it, and I typically have the auditors start at the end of August, and so it's usually the end of August and September that they do their field work. So, this year, one of the things that we had to wait on was that there are required supplemental disclosures that you have to do that include information about your pension, so we had to wait on the Hampton County Pension Report audited financial statements to be completed before we could insert those into ours. So that was the biggest delay.
That was the whole, okay.
But actually, we're one of their first round of towns to, that they audit, because we're usually ready.
Yeah, we're usually either their first or their second at being ready.
So, if we're ready to go over the budget, I can tell you that the second page after the cover, the top is pretty much the same. The last two paragraphs are different, so I'm just going to read those because everybody's heard the top, which is the highlights of the expenditures and our budget process. But the third paragraph is, or the fourth paragraph is, "To address concerns stated by the town council, the supplemental budget requests and the capital projects that were originally recommended to the council have been revised. Although portions of this evening's presentation are unchanged from my original proposed budget, pages three through nine reflect those changes. Those revisions translate to a projected tax rate of 21.99. The current tax rate is 20.94." So, some of us met earlier, and I had given you some information. I told you that I was still in the process of proofing the numbers. Sarah and I spent a lot of the afternoon doing that, and this is a very accurate reflection. A little higher than I had projected. There were pieces that I didn't have in there. So, I would suggest that we go to, where do you want to go? Do you want to go to detail, or do you still want to go to summary, high level? It's totally up to you all.
You want to go to detail?
You've kind of seen the overview.
We've heard pretty much the detail, two weeks ago, right? The detail hasn't changed.
Most of the detail hasn't changed, the original.
The, well, the sources hasn't really changed.
The sources hasn't changed.
But the uses have, because I've made some recommended cuts to that.
Let's go there.
So, yeah.
Staples throw me off.
Sorry about that. I told ya. I wouldn't make a good secretary anymore. That was a long time ago. So I can sort of spike out where the major changes are to the... So there's a reduction, no, there's actually an increase in the, oh, the reason for the increases in the budget are because we now have folded in supplementals which weren't folded in the first time around.
The supplementals that we discussed last week.
That we discussed, but a lot of them have been cut back.
Okay. So the 21.99 reflects the last discussion we had with the supplementals?
Yes.
With the reduction, we cut out more of those, and then cut back more of the capital.
And we're still at 21.99?
Mm-hmm.
So it's a dollar more.
A dollar more.
A dollar five.
Dollar five.
A dollar five more, which, when you look at, you can look at the summary page, for example, and you'll see that essentially the unused levy capacity that we're leaving is just over a million dollars, and last year was about a million two, so it's 180,000 difference. So we're pretty close in considering that with the fire, the increase for that, it's about 500,000, and then it's close to 400 for the dispatch. We actually are doing better than what we did last year, if you think about it, because both of those are being added in there, and it's only really changing what you're leaving of the unused levy capacity by less than 200,000.
And as we talked about, the group that came in this morning, the councilman that came in this morning, this is the high of all of those changes, the public safety changes especially, because we have to onboard everything, make that leap, and there are things that we're, being very conservative, I would rather estimate high, and next year be able to come back and reduce something that we found was a little high when we have no history whatsoever on it. The receptionist costs for the dispatches is an area, for instance, that is likely to change next year, but we're doing the max amount so that we're sure that everything is covered. The fire department will be...
The expenditure for that piece of it will be different, because of revenue.
It'll be different because we're going to have billing, starting like for the fire.
Right, for the end of.
So this year, this year is a lot of expense without any revenue to offset it.
I did not put in an estimate for the revenue for that, since I'm unsure as to when it's going to start and what our population looks like. We have some good estimates, but I don't want to overstate and then us run into a problem. So instead, I was conservative and did not include that revenue.
I guess it's fair to say, too, until all contract negotiations have been completed, that that number is not reflected in the budget numbers.
It is not.
Correct.
The fire department has replied their union contract, so their salaries reflect the increase. Any others? I could not do that, because it would be unfair bargaining with the unions. If they, if they had any perception whatsoever, which they don't, because I don't have that, that there's a fixed amount, and that's what it's going to be no matter what, you can't do that. So, I can't reflect those numbers. We do have money in reserve this year that we can, well, that won't, that won't work for that, because that's next fiscal year, those increases.
Right.
But we have some managers that are going to be...
We do have the reserve as well for next fiscal year, so it should offset any of those, those things if necessary. In the past few years, since I've been here, then my projections for the tax rate have been higher than the actuals, in that I've been on the conservative side. So, I feel pretty confident that most likely I will still be too high on this, but I'd rather be at the highest rather than it go the other way.
I would just ask, while Sarah's here, were any of the departments able to turn any of their money back in from the budget last year?
Yes. Yes, there are departments that have had turned back at the end of the year. And some of that went towards free cash, and others of it, so for example, the town council last year voted for the IT's turn, amount they were going to turn back to purchase the drone instead.
Are you able to identify any of those departments at this point?
No, it's too early to tell.
Which, I meant, which? From last year.
Oh, from last year. Yes, yes.
Certainly, we could tell.
I could go back, and I could look to see which ones have it. I could tell you from my memory that we did have a large amount from DPW, from utilities, because our electric usage and the solar credits really paid off. That was a huge, I want to say over 300,000, maybe 350,000, if I recall. So that was a big amount of turn back, which makes a big difference. But you can't, at that time, it was our first year at having the solar credits, so you can't anticipate that. And we had a pretty good year, utilities-wise as well, at not having major heat or major, major cold either, which also made a big impact on us last year. which also made a big impact on us last year.
So would you like that information from last year's budget?
I would, because I'd like to see how it's, you know, what comprises it. And like Sarah just answered, I mean, the solar had a lot to do with the turn back from DPW because it's revenue that we weren't able to anticipate until we probably ran a full cycle or a full year, so.
Helps you get a clear picture of if we're...
If we're accurate in our budget.
Right. Another one that did have, that did have turn back, I can't remember the dollar amount, was the health insurance, because we budget as if we are full staff and that there was a lot of vacancies and turnovers last year, as you're all aware. And so that impacts how much that then you're spending, therefore, on the fringe benefits.
I can see Bruce isn't here, so any questions regarding the enterprise fund? Neither one of you would be able to answer any questions regarding that?
Well, what kind of questions I might be able to, it depends on the question.
Yeah.
Well, I know, so the balance in there, the water source, is what do, what is it and why is it? Or is it, I'm told it's around a million.
Okay.
Why is it a million and where does that number come from?
So, an enterprise fund is, for simplicity's sake, it's like a mini general fund, okay? So the million dollars that you're referring to is the amount of free cash that that particular fund was certified to have. So that means that that is the amount that is undesigned and unassigned to any current expenses. So that one was water, sewer was less than that.
Right.
So when you have that as your free cash, that's what you use in case of an emergency, in, in case of anything like that. Our enterprise funds that we have, don't have reserves. They don't have a stabilization fund or any, anything like that. That is the only thing that they have. So some of what we've used that for in the past and currently is to offset some of the rate increases that would be happening with both water and sewer. And so you will see on the enterprise fund, if you look at that budget, you're going to see a line that says retained earnings and a dollar amount. And essentially, that's money out of that million that we are using to reduce the impact. So then we're not doing a huge rate increase to our residents.
So if you look at page 11, that's the sewer enterprise fund. It might be easier to...
Yep.
Yep, so that was used this year for the fringe that rate, this was already given.
Yep, and we did that last year, and we did that again this year. And then another thing that we have been doing with that money is the water and sewer capital projects that we have. Where possible, we've been using that free cash to fund those where possible. So you'll see that for this year that we're recommending to, to bond the sewer because the sewer has less free cash, and that would take up more than half of that free cash. So if something bad were to happen, there is no other money to, to fall back on, should something bad happen. So it's not recommended to use up all of it because you should have some kind of a, a cushion should something happen.
There is a possibility paying out of the general, general fund or free cash as an emergency fund transfer?
I would have to check with the state whether that's allowed because it's supposed to be completely separate. And if you need to do a general fund subsidy, you're supposed to project that at the time of budget. So you're not, so I'm not sure if that were to ha, if it was such an emergency that we went through all of the free cash, because we're budgeting to not use it all just in case, that what you would do at that time. I'm assuming that we would obviously need town council approval. I just don't know if we'd also need state approval, because sometimes you need that for those unexpected well and beyond. So we want to make sure that we're prudent about how we're, we're using everything and not planning to spend every dime.
I understand, so the enterprise fund is currently not a fund that we could use to help offset some of the tax increases?
No, no, that's prohibited by law.
Okay.
So if you look at the, the bottom of the, the retained earnings is the, the line that is actually being, for, for the sewer enterprise fund, for instance, that's the amount that is being used to offset the, the rates.
Mm-hmm.
So where do you see that?
At the bottom of the page. On, on page 11?
Okay.
At the, the retained earnings at the bottom of that, of that page? So it's a significant amount that's being used to...
How do we come up with that number?
And so in order to come up with that number, it's, you cannot have an unbalanced budget. So if the expenses that we're projecting based on what we have from Springfield Water and Sewer and all of our other obligations, if it shows that we would be in the negative, then you have to have another source. So we therefore would go into the, the retained earnings. Now, let's say that we had like, if you look at LCAT, for instance, they have a...
Just the page before.
They have a budget surplus, and it's because they would wind up in the positive. But again, you have to show it balanced, so it's showing a budget surplus in there of 3,716. So that would be both ways, you know, that, that you could have it.
Okay, for the folks that are watching and for the, the balance of our residents who I'm sure are going to be interested in the water sewer rates increases?
Mm-hmm.
How is that, how, how is that process completed?
So what happens is that the DPW superintendent, he, we have some pretty intense spreadsheets as to, okay, what we're projecting water usage or sewer usage to be based on the past several years' history. We also get information from Springfield Water and Sewer as to what their estimated increases are, as well as they have other items such as capital improvements and things like that that all of the organizations who use them have to pay and contribute. So what they do do is they do a true-up once a year as to, okay, now that we have our actuals, this is how much extra you either owe or that you get back. This past year, the true-up was 125,000, which is a significant amount. They've never had that big of a true-up before, but they have some major infrastructure projects that they are working on. So we are anticipating that it's going to be, that it's going to be higher again. We do get reports from them. The DPW superintendent spends a lot of time, him and his staff, at auditing their reports and making sure that what we're being charged for is accurate. But that, that's how it's come up.
And so the majority of these increases are really pass-throughs?
Correct.
Springfield Water Sewer?
Correct.
So that we have no control over that?
No, we do not. That is absolutely correct.
That's the point I was trying to make.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm having, I'm really struggling with the dollar five increase. This is what I said.
You're not the only one.
Yeah, the only one. Yeah, no, we...
Yeah, my, my challenge is again, and I said this at the last meeting, and I'll repeat it. Gas prices are pushing north of $3 a gallon. We have, you know, a lot of people, and I see this in my practice, you know, they have home equity loans. And they're, they're going up. So the money used to put their roots in and do all their work to their house, they're now paying even more money for it because of that. And a typical $400,000 house is going to go up well over 400, $400 because of this increase. And I understand the needs, but I also, you know, I have to ask ourselves, what can be delayed? What can be cut, or what can we take money from other, without her in the town, to mitigate this? Because this is, this is the biggest increase that I've seen. I mean, the first year we became a council, we dropped the mill rate by 4%. Then we've had incremental increases. And I, I just want to make sure that when we talk to our constituents and the, when we meet them, that we truly have done everything and there's no...
Question.
If there's no wish list items here, there's all based on need. I mean, if some, if something can be delayed one year, or something that'd be impact, impact our citizens less because, you know, they're getting hit in all, all phases. If they have fossil fuel heating oil, that's probably going to go up during the winter as well. So in these, this aggregate, you know, it, it kind of, it has an impact of East Long Meadow as a town. And then, of course, we all know that 25 is a magic number. And we're, we're, we're going to be at 22.
Right, and then, but just a reminder that the 25 is your cap without your debt exclusions. The 21.99 does include your debt exclusion. So our actual rate is lower than that because you don't count the debt exclusions towards that 25 cap, just so you're aware.
All right, thank you.
Through the president?
Go ahead.
Maybe this is a good time to talk about the discussions that have been ongoing with the...
Might as well.
A number of the councilors and with Denise. We're in the process of reviewing where we can make some additional cuts. And we're, we're all in agreement, I think individually, through individual discussions and, and meetings with one or two people. We've had a general consensus and agreement that we need to do something, that this is not, not something that we're comfortable with, nor are we going to agree to. So there's going to be additional cuts throughout all the budgets. And one of the things we're looking to do is find funding from other sources to help offset some of that cost. And one of the discussions we have, or I had with Denise today, was on the revolving funds. Currently, there's a substantial amount of money in the revolving funds.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe it's justified, maybe it's not. So I think there's an opportunity to look there as well, as I've mentioned in the past. If we can bring in 200 or 300,000 and put that towards this, we can help to reduce some of this as well. But obviously, we're going to have to make some cuts. And that's not going to offset everything.
Understand that from the last budget to this budget, things were added, the supplementals that needed to be added. But I also reduced by almost 400,000, both capital, which is funded less percentage-wise than it was last year.
Mm-hmm.
It was 2. something, and this year it's 1.8.
No, you did, you did a great job bringing this back down from the last budget that we've seen.
Yeah, I'm not saying it for that reason.
No, but that, but that's, that's obvious to us from looking at this.
But it still doesn't get us where...
Right.
Doesn't get us where we need to be.
Getting closer to where we need to be.
It's a good move forward, but I'm not sure we can get behind a dollar five increase.
I personally can't, to be honest with you, I can't get behind a dollar five increase. But I know that we've put a lot of work into it, and I know that when we met with everybody for the supplementals to discuss it with department heads, I think that department heads have, you know, presented some arguments and said, you know, you feel for everybody, but it's just not, you know, there's times where it's not feasible.
Well, I've cut, just so you're aware, that, sensitive to the, the statements that were made about adding employees, which then mushrooms to benefits as well, no, no new positions. We've increased the fire department position because there will be so much more staff and billing, just getting it up and rolling, from 19 hours to 30, I think it is.
Yeah.
So that will include benefits of that position and...
But that one has a potential revenue stream after they're in full force, right?
Or really immediately.
Well, at some point, it'll begin to flow, but we won't have an accurate picture on that or even a trend for two or three years. But at least the income from that stream will help mitigate the increase in those five hours. Did you say five hours?
The...
19.
19.
Oh, 1930, okay.
30.
So it's 11. The others are the library that actually came in, if I recall, last year with a zero or a, a very minimal increase last year.
They gave her a zero last year.
And, and the way she did that was by cutting staff. So adding five hours, I think it is, to her, her secretarial staff is, is certainly not a, a big ask. And the recreation department, who has stepped up and said, look, I don't need full-time, I don't need the capital projects, saving significant amounts of money, to then ask, ask for the part-time to be increased, is the other one that, that stayed in. Other than that, every other position has been cut.
I have a question. So I was going to say after our, is everybody else set?
Well, I, yeah.
Go ahead, Paul.
Well, no, I mean, I was just going to say, it's, it's an interesting and challenging era, obviously. And, you know, Sarah, I love her, I love the fiscal conservativeness of the, you know, it may not be a dollar five increase. I'm not in favor of a dollar five increase because I pay taxes. But, you know, you have to look at, it's almost if you look at a business, we're funding, say, for example, the ambulance. So you have to put money out, and I'm not, I'm not anti, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that it's a good thing to raise taxes, but now you, you expend money to improve the services, and ultimately, that service is going to generate money that's going to reduce the taxes because it's going to, you know, I think we talked about the potential of, was it 400,000? 300,000?
I think our first year we were anticipating two and then subsequent years, yes.
So, so it's going to be self-sufficient, and, and, you know, what you're spending now will come back to you ultimately probably tenfold over, over time. The problem is the fact that you don't want to have the tax rate go up. So somehow we have to, you know, hopefully there's a happy medium somewhere. And it would be nice that, that your dollar five estimate is actually, you know, say 80 cents or something, and when all said and done.
Right, and we won't know until September when we estimate the tax rate to know for sure.
On that subject, I would feel the same way about regional. That's not going to be a money maker, but at some, at some point in time, it would stabilize the community in regards to purchases of $700,000 radio systems that could be amortized between two departments or three departments, however many end up being invited in. So I would hope that that would show some return on investment if, if it goes forward. But my first statement was really, because everybody's on, if we look at the mill rate at about $22, I would just ask you to confirm, I, I did some computations after leaving the last meeting and discussing them today, that in order to move that number south approximately 25 cents, would you be looking at reducing about a half a million off the budget to move it 25 cents?
Yes.
Okay, so it gives you a general idea.
Yeah.
If we start at a mill rate that's acceptable, then, and I believe Denise, you've already started chopping at this, so we'll, we'll have to see what your recommendations are.
I'm sorry you all have a difficult, difficult job. I can, with guidance from you all, do more, but it's, it will impact services, I'm afraid. And that's really where you all need to provide your priorities there.
I, I did want to let you know, we talked about the ambulance with bringing in revenue that was not included in here for the regional dispatch, that we typically do get grants for it. So we don't know at what point we will get the grant, so we did not include any of that which will offset the expenses to us. So we are anticipating that our actual expenses are going to be lower, but since we can't guarantee that, you know, how much the state's going to approve or anything like that, or when it would come in, we did not include that either. But the state is moving towards wanting regional, which then enables us to qualify for bigger grants.
And, and to add to Councilman Kane's conversation on that, the, the long-term for dispatch would be that we would have to in-house have two dispatchers ourselves.
Right.
And either be training all our police officers and have two of them off the road.
Which is not our choice, it's a state mandate.
Yeah, it's, it's not our choice, but it will, it will be something that will impact our station because we won't have, is that me?
Jim's here.
You're, you're already giving your feedback.
No pun is said.
You missed that opportunity.
You know, I, 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 I'm going to let him, I'm going to let him enjoy that punishing the crowd. It's very good.
So, so again, it is investing in the future, as you're saying, but it is painful, I know.
I think there may be an opportunity here from the consensus and the discussions that we've had is to create a subcommittee from the council, and maybe some, Sarah, obviously, and yourself to be included, to go back and, and look at this, to see what we can do, line by line, and start to look at serious cuts. Hopefully stay away from services, but look at additional revenues, maybe from the revolving funds, as I mentioned.
Yeah.
And, and any other opportunity that we have to bring that down. I, I mean, that's, that's way north of where we need to be, that I'm comfortable with. And I know, I'm not going to speak for everyone here, but the discussions that we've had and all the head shaking, no one is.
I'm sure, I'm sure there can be something happening.
Yeah, so.
I would just like to include that I did spend an hour on the phone. Joe's not here, obviously, something, maybe traffic enabled him or, or him to be here. But I spoke with him for at least an hour, and he's on the same page as the rest of us.
Yes, I had lengthy conversations with him yesterday.
So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we create a subcommittee to go back and pull the pieces of this budget apart again and give a fight to come look over, yeah?
That's good of me. So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I don't know.
All right, now we can come up with members. Who wants to be on the budget subcommittee?
I'll be on.
And the purpose? You should probably specifically state the purpose.
Short timeframe, yes.
It would have to be within the next few weeks, I think.
And how many members are we looking for?
No more than three.
Three.
Okay, I, no one else is jumping at it, I'll...
I, no one else is jumping at it, I'll volunteer my time to participate in that.
All right, there we have it. Me and Tom will.
Pardon?
You and Tom and I can do it.
Okay, so there's three.
Okay.
Oh, good, I get to spend more time locked in a room with you guys.
I haven't seen you up this week, I miss you Denise, so.
Yeah, well, that's why you got all the candy in your office to keep us fed, so.
Bring more sugar, we're gonna need it.
All right, so we should come up with a schedule so that both Sarah and I can reserve the time. And if you're going to wanna talk to department heads, well, we can have a first meeting and then go from there.
Yeah, we could do it very quickly.
Being time-sensitive, maybe we should have it posted before, sooner than later.
Yeah, you'll need to tell me when you're available.
We do have a public hearing scheduled for May twenty-second.
Yeah.
On the budget.
Right.
At what time?
Seven, seven o'clock.
So you have to, six to seven to make your recommended, oh, no, you have to, you have to say what's in the bu, it needs to be posted.
We have to have a special meeting in between.
Right, we have to, according to the charter, we have to provide the budget for the public, for the public hearing.
For the hearing, right. So the meeting in between, I've got a few weeks.
Not really.
Just two.
Yeah.
Has to be next week.
And I won't be here for the twenty-second, I probably won't be here for the in-between, so.
So at least we probably should pick a date while the three of us are here that works for our first subcommittee meeting, so the time can post it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Early next.
It's only Tuesday, we could do it this week.
Friday's on the, I'm a workman.
You're talking a subcommittee meeting?
No, we're talking a subcommittee.
Talking about a subcommittee.
Right, we're talking myself, you and me.
Yeah, I'm not subcommittee meeting. I'm not here Friday.
You're not.
Of the other state. But Thursday, I mean.
You gotta post it.
How much time we need to, we need two days to post.
Twenty-four hours, okay.
So it's gotta be forty-eight hours, is it forty-eight hours?
If he posts it first thing in the morning. Well, Thursday work if he posts it right away in the morning?
That's forty-eight hours.
Not unless we met after seven o'clock at night.
So Monday is Monday.
Friday's out.
Right.
Monday I'm-
You back Monday time?
I'm back Monday.
Late or?
Around noon time.
I'm tied up till three o'clock on Monday.
Doesn't matter to me, what time I do it.
So we can go after that.
Retired guys.
Can we three-thirty?
Yeah.
Three-thirty Monday?
You know, I mean, it's a hazard of the job, but I'm wide open.
No, I'm back at noon time, so anytime.
But he's got the move, so give him time to get there at three-thirty?
Yeah, I, I think three-thirty would work.
That's okay.
Just about there.
I'll make it work.
So that's the fourteenth, five-fourteen.
What time?
At three-thirty. Tom will post it tomorrow.
Should we also post a meeting for the next day as well? I'm imagining, if you wanna go line by line, that it may take more than one meeting, so it'd be on the safe side to already post it.
You know what, you can cancel it if you don't.
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking, just so then we have enough time to put together and still provide it for townspeople.
So is there a time on Tuesday, the fifteenth, that works for the three of you?
Well, what's the first one, we just, that was for the following Tuesday, right?
That's for Monday, the fourteenth.
Monday, the fourteenth.
Monday at three-thirty.
The fourteenth.
So the fifteenth, is there a date, time that works here on the fifteenth as well?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm back, everything is good.
So what do we have on, what were we saying on Tuesday?
Tuesday at three-thirty.
We don't have a council.
Do we, Monday at three-thirty, and then Tuesday, what are we gonna do? We're just having another meeting in case we need it.
Yeah.
So we're gonna schedule now so it's open and we can post it.
On Monday, up until three o'clock?
Three-thirty Monday is when we're having it.
I mean, on Tuesday, I'm sorry.
Tuesday. Tuesday, I have meetings scattered. I have the morning, ten.
That's what, ten, fifteen.
I can't do ten.
Ten, Kevin?
I have a meeting ten to ten-thirty.
Okay.
I mean, ten to eleven-thirty, excuse me.
To eleven-thirty.
That's the only meeting that I have on Tuesday.
So we could do it early afternoon?
You wanna say after, after they return from lunch?
Yeah.
About, oh, well, it's lunch.
Yeah.
What is lunch, right?
How about one?
One's good.
Sure. Tuesday.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So the, the point in the subcommittee is for us to be able to, to come with other places that we can cut. Do we have a goal in mind, either a certain dollar amount to cut or a certain mill rate to get to?
Discussion originally was somewhere in the twenty-one fifty to twenty-one seventy-five range. That was part of what we had spoken about, sort of generally. I don't know that we can get there.
Okay.
Right, but that was kinda where we were at.
I'm sorry, I missed what you had asked, Sarah, to look into, but I think the revolving funds is something I'd like to make sure we have increased.
Right, and the revolving funds, that's part of my annual review that I do anyway at the end of each year, so I do have a plan in place, but I'm more than happy to go over it with you and show you what that plan is.
Yeah, we do set the spending limits on out, so there may be an opportunity to do something with those.
Say that again, please?
We do set the spending limits for those revolving funds, so there may be an opportunity this year to do something with those.
Town hall.
Denise, one o'clock on Tuesday?
One o'clock on Tuesday, yeah, and it can be in the-
Town hall, for both places?
Sure. If it's three, there's five of us, the room comfortably fits more than that, so if any public wants to come, you know.
Town hall or library?
The town, town hall, town managers, the comfort room.
Oh, it's, okay.
I could check insurance.
The town, town managers.
Where we met last week.
It will be. Not to worry.
Thanks.
Tom, Kevin, and Mike.
Thank you very much.
So if there's specific detail that you're looking for, that you would want us to provide there or ahead of time, let us know.
I'll be bringing this anyway, it's kind of attached to my arm.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out at our first meeting on Monday.
Yeah. Well, if you know of somehow, for instance, we've talked about revolving funds, I'm sure Sarah can have that information.
And I will have more than enough, I'll have it all with me.
Yeah. But if there is a particular one, and you want a department head there, we can do that as well. I know you talked a little bit today about Public Works, that was Enterprise Fund, I think, because I questioned that with Bruce not around.
Well, the answers, actually, I think we're, what we're looking for is kinda here, and Sarah was able to help us a lot with those, just because she knows the background.
Yeah, we understand it better. So we're, we're available.
Okay. Move to three, we discussed the revolving funds, or are we just gonna wait until?
No, we'll wait, yeah. Sarah's gonna have to look, bring the information.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Onto four. So we are voting on the tax incentive amount for the forty-five industrial drive property. This was discussed at length, and I think what we, what we have in front of us with the yellow sheet.
I don't know, did we discuss this on executive the first time?
Yes. But now it's out because-
Right, no, but I'm just saying, you might wanna give the folks the idea of what-
Yeah, we're just gonna go over, so this is a, this is a local incentive that was applied for by a business for a purchase of, well, to move their business to forty-five Industrial Avenue, it's in cooperation, sort of through the state, that we have the ability to offer, there is an existing business looking to move to that property, if they can work out the details with the property owner. They asked us to give them a, see if we could come up with a tax incentive program to get that business to move here. It's a business that's been, a family business, it's been in, they've been in business for over a hundred years, locally, just not here. There was a couple different locations that they looked at, but preferential, hopefully they're looking at these, so I might a little bit, with a little bit harder. So they have some significant improvements to do on the property. Part of the tax incentive is basically the town doesn't lose anything on the valuation of the property, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but-
Okay. Doing great so far.
So we, we maintain whatever we collect in the existing value, whatever upgrades they do between the existing value that we have now and the upgrades, we're able to play with that number a little bit to get to a hundred percent of that tax valuation at some point over, up to a twenty-year period.
Right. And remember that the, that the improvements that they do, it's not dollar for dollar, it's the improvements that they do that result in an increased value.
Value, right.
So it's that difference, not the actual dollar for dollar of the improvement that they put in.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
We're talking assessed value.
Correct, correct.
So the business owners were looking to put about total, I think it was one and a half million dollars into the property, just, just north of that maybe. And so they asked for, if we could come up with an incentive, which is what we have been discussing, sort of in executive session, and because it was a piece of negotiation to figure out where we're gonna be, and we were competing with other towns, which is why we were in executive session. So we have a document today provided by Sarah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, of course, it's with the municipal tax rate that we were at, twenty ninety-four. And it's, this one is-
And the incremental assessed value is our best estimate based on the facts that we know. It's not a guarantee that that's the exact amount of the assessed value, it would all be contingent on once it's finalized, and then the assessors assess the property. This is our best estimate based on the facts that they provided.
And certainly it won't be, this won't be it, because there's, we don't know how much they're gonna be changing, adding.
Right.
It all is in flux, but this is at least a four percent.
Quite frankly, we're not sure if they'll even get the property for what they need to get it for, but-
Right, correct.
This is a start.
It's, yeah.
So there's a certain forgiveness, I guess for lack of a better term, over a certain number. You can kinda probably explain that their exemption in the first two years would be a hundred percent of that middle, that seven thirty-three, correct?
It would be a hundred percent, so the tax rate would be fifteen thousand, three fifty-five thirty is the tax amount on that seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred. So this proposal is that the first two years, a hundred percent of that, so fifteen thousand five, three fifty-five thirty would be exempt, and we would not be charging them tax on, for that amount, and that's how much they would have as a benefit.
And just to quickly point out, I think right now it's around twenty-four thousand that the property is, to the collection.
Say that again, please?
The tax rate on the property, or the taxes we collect on the property, existing property right now is like around twenty-four thousand.
I believe so, yes.
Something in that neighborhood, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, something close to there, I, I don't remember the exact figure, but-
I think the valuation is one point eight, eight million.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know.
Yeah, I was-
If you're the math person, you can figure it out.
Yes, it's about there, yes.
You told me.
And, and so then this proposal would be for fifteen years, and you can see that it's, the first two years a hundred percent, then ninety, eighty, seventy, going down to ten percent, so the final five years would be at ten percent. And then what would happen at the end of those fifteen years, then we would collect the full amount of the assessed value at that time. Now, part of this TIF agreement, it is an agreement that you have, and the state monitors this closely, so the company has to fulfill certain requirements, and if they default on those, then you can withdraw the tax incentive. So it's not that they get to keep it and then don't fulfill their promises. So I just want everyone to know that there are safeguards in place for this program.
And part of that is they have to bring a certain number of jobs to even qualify, there's a whole list of things that they have to do through the state before they even get to sit down with us, that they have to say that they're gonna bring to the table as part of this.
Correct.
In addition to whatever equipment they bring, that's another tax piece that we're real property, or whatever you wanna call it, that we could tax, that is not in that building now, because there's nothing in here, but-
Right.
So there is sort of a, a balance on the real estate for what they bring in with equipment, as far as, on that note.
They can, they can request some kind of incentive for the equipment as well, if I remember correctly.
For personal property, but at this time, we are unaware of them having requested that, so we have not provided any estimates on there.
I know in our meeting, they'd ever mentioned, they'd ever mentioned it at all when we talked about it, so.
No. And if I recall, it's approximately sixty jobs that would be moving here, as well as that they planned to increase, I wanna say five to ten over the next-
Five in the first couple of years, and then the next few years after that, they said possibly ten, and then they have three hundred employees employed by the, you know, by the business that are in and out over the course of, you know, time.
Yes.
Which brings in revenue other places.
As, as does the, for manufacturing, manufacturing, equipment is very expensive, so it's to our benefit that it's expensive equipment.
But to clarify, they are not classified as manufacturing, because manufacturing is exempt from personal property, and they are not exempt, so I believe they're fabricating.
Yeah.
Yes. Club and fabrication, that's what they are.
Well, without this tax incentive, it would make it difficult for them to go forward to continue negotiations with the current owners, so.
Right. And also, if you think of the other side, and we discussed this, suppose they come in and we give them the incentives, and they decide they're gonna leave after five years or six years, you've got a building that's worth over a million dollars more because of the improvements, and the next person that comes in will get the real estate taxes from them without, you know, theoretically without any reduced figures, so.
And one of the things we talked about with this fifteen-year period was twenty was sort of too long, five was too short, so we kinda tried to balance between ten and fifteen, and I know Denise, you have some personal experience with Pratt.
Yes.
They, they had a five-year TIF.
UTC, they, they, they did ten years, and after the ten years, they, they walked. They took-
So as soon as their tax incentive was done, they took off.
As soon as they were up to full speed.
I don't see that happening with this company, they've been around a long time, and they're looking to stay in the area, but-
Significant invest, you would think that they wouldn't have done that, because it was such a significant investment that they made in the building, but they did. So, yeah, I think this company is a pretty stable company.
Anybody else have any questions on that?
I don't.
I don't.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax incentive proposal, option number one for fifteen years regarding forty-five industrial.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion?
Just that, we may wanna put this on the town website. So everybody, are we at that point where we can do that, where I'm, we have a negotiation?
I think we need to offer it to the-
Okay, well, maybe, okay, once-
Yeah.
Yeah, once he offers, maybe we put it out.
Eyes are dotted and a teeth are crossed.
I was just asking, something like that.
Cross my eyes.
This tax incentive proposal is specific to this location in this business, correct?
Correct.
And it doesn't, the other side, no, I, I know, but is it, it doesn't involve us being beholden to this particular plan in the future for any other business.
A lot of, a lot of communities, I think West Springfield, we've looked at their, their document, they, they actually have a policy or on that.
And that is, and we would like to adopt one.
That was one of them, we had, but, once this came up and came to our attention, so we talked about coming up with a policy, but it doesn't make the next guy be able to get the same deal.
Right.
So we need to vote still? So, we, we need to vote still?
Yes. So, there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Now, if I may, Mr. President, I think, I was looking at our suggested motions, and I think way back on seven A three, we were supposed to vote on the.
We were, so we gotta go back.
On the town manager's.
We'll go back and revisit the town managers.
Job performance.
Oh, I know, I think I was that. Was that when I was late?
No.
No, no.
No. Alright, so we just go back quickly, I'll entertain a motion to go back to.
Seven.
Seven, three.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
So, move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now, by the charter, we were obligated to perform the performance appraisal on Denise, and the summary of that evaluation, charter evaluation is what is required to be presented, uh, so, everybody, Kathy went over this already, so I'm just gonna go over the back end. So, the town manager evaluation of Denise Menard contains ten categories of evaluation criteria. Each category contains a statement to describe a behavior standard in that category. The scale mode below represents the degree of performance, five is excellent, almost always exceeds performance standards, four is above average, generally exceeds performance standard, three is average, generally meets performance standard, two is below average, usually does not meet performance standard, and one is poor, rarely meets the performance standard. So, the performance, uh, category scoring, scores for each category represent the aggregate average score of the seven town council members who completed town manager's performance evaluation. Individual characteristics, four point four zero, professional skills and status was four point two eight, relations with elected members of the governing body, three point nine one, policy execution, four point four two, reporting, four point one seven, citizen relations, four point four five, staffing, three point eight zero, supervision, four point two eight, fiscal management, four point four two, and community, four point four five. Our evaluations also contain a narrative section, so responses to each question reflect the consensus remarks of the seven town council members who completed town manager's performance evaluation. Question one, what would you identify as a town manager's strength expressed in terms of the principal results achieved during the rating period? Denise is a strong manager with exceptional interpersonal skills, she's been instrumental in the transition from selectmen town, town meeting to the town manager, town council, former governor, has risen to the challenge of a changing environment, and has displayed calm confidence and professionalism in carrying out her duties. She has kept the council informed of potential issues and challenges, and has produced a fiscal responsible budget while increasing public services and the level of public safety. She has reorganized town departments in an effort to streamline operations, and has demonstrated the ability to work with department heads in a collegial and team spirit. She has made the transition look easy. Uh, question two, what performance areas would you identify most critical for improvement? As the responsibilities of town manager are demanding and time-consuming, it's recommended Denise, through a focus on time management, ensure that response to constituents, employees, media, and council in a timely fashion, it's also recommended she keep the council informed of known activities in action of town boards. Question three, was what constructive suggestions or assistance can you offer to town manager to enhance performance? It is recommended that Denise, one, conduct performance reviews of subordinates and provide feedback for accountability improvement; two, ensure training opportunities and professional development for all staff; three, implement technology to increase effectiveness; four, create job descriptions for all town employees to assist with accountability and fiscal responsibility; five, analyze town departments to reduce duplication of effort; six, require department heads to develop a plan for service during department head absences; seven, conduct quarterly check-ins with the council regarding progress on key initiatives; eight, develop a five-year action plan. Uh, four, what other components do you add for the town manager? For example, priorities, expectation goals, or objectives for the new rating period, in addition to the duties and responsibilities outlined in the charter and employment contract with the town of Easton Mount, it's recommended Denise focus on the goals outlined below. Revamp the annual budget process to begin in October and start with an information gathering session with the town council. Develop a five-year capital plan for fiscal years nineteen through twenty-three that includes information on the status of projects in progress. Require department heads to develop a capital asset inventory by June two thousand nineteen, monitor school department's residency fraud plan and rely on the council's help if necessary. And so that is the summary of the evaluation.
Well, thank you.
So, I gotta have you sign this later, but, I'll, I'll pass it over to you if you want.
Well, it, it would be handy for me to get a copy.
I have that too.
Because, otherwise, I'm not gonna remember all those priorities, that was the longest list.
You didn't look at it?
So, um, it's, it seems to me very fair, and, um, actually, I'm, must be very in tune with you all, because probably half of those things that you've put as goals are already in process, so I'm extremely comfortable with, with what you've done, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Likewise.
Likewise. Thank you.
You're not leaving just yet. Alright, so now we can, I'll entertain a motion to go back into order for number ten.
Don't we, don't we have to vote on that?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, so I have an entertain a motion to accept the annual review of the town manager Denise Menard's job performance summary, which will be available for public per Article Two, Section Five of the Charter.
So, move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now we can, now I'll entertain a motion to go back to item ten on the original agenda executive session.
So, move?
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anything, Jim? Okay, so we'll move on to eleven, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move?
Is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.